Follow me, Jordan, could you do a roll call?
Merrick.
Yep.
Boer.
Yes.
Lottenbach.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Mervorden.
Here.
Havik.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Dashlet is excused tonight.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with the breathing justice for all.
Okay, we're holding this meeting in compliance with the open meeting law. Could I get the approval of the agenda as submitted?
I would request a change of agenda.
What would you like to change?
I would like under new business, I would like to move item E to after item B.
Okay.
Item E to...
Okay.
After item B.
B?
Yeah, budget discussion, then Algoma Medical Center Operations Transfer Agreement Addendums.
So you want the transfer agreement before the retention package?
The retention package, yes.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of the changed agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the agenda is adopted as...
Sorry, point of order, that was approved. I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, that is approved.
Who are you giving that second to, Swedberg or...?
You can take it. Yeah, that's fine, whatever, yeah, it is fine. Just a formality.
Oh, okay, then we can move on to the approval of the meeting minutes. Now, one motion to approve the July 5th and the July 19th minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the minutes are approved as public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the council? Is there anyone from the audience that would like to? Okay, one last chance, anybody coming forward, okay, then we'll move on to the next item. Consideration of bills, did you get a chance to look at the bills and if so, are there any questions? No questions?
I had a couple on the registry. The John Robinson CBDG project, and then down farther, there's another Robinson, is that this? Could you clarify?
Judy Robinson?
Yeah, is that different addresses?
Same address, like it's a split though. The son was upstairs, the dad and mom, or vice versa. That's why there's two different payments.
Okay.
One was renting, so it's a son renting from his parents.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the bills? Now, could I have a roll call on payments of this bill?
Can I get a motion to approve the bill on credit card payment as presented?
Second.
Okay, and then you do a roll call.
Mervorden.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Merrick.
Yes.
Lottenbach.
Yes.
Boer.
Yes.
Havik.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries, okay, next thing is committee reports, does anyone have any questions on any of the committee reports as shown in area nine? Okay, if there are no questions, could I get somebody to approve the receipt of the reports?
Moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, committee reports are accepted. Old business, is there any old business to come before? No, okay, new business, turn it over to Erin about the temporary license.
All right, so we have two temporary Class B, Class B retailer licenses. One is for the Algoma Fire and Rescue Association UA 813, that's the Shanty Days Weekend, that's a Class B beer license. The other is for the Algoma Hunting and Fishing Club, that is also for Shanty Days, that is a combination Class B beer and wine license. Looking for a motion to approve those.
Moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the motions are approved. Okay, next item, budget discussion.
I just wanted to put that on there for the council, a couple Cliff Notes, I guess I would say. I met with all of the department heads, or city staff, met with all the department heads this last week. But for the fire chief and I will be sitting down and just kind of going through some bullet points. But more or less, it was just a very brief, you know, any wishes that anybody has, I think I've told everybody this at the council, I mean, I'm sorry, at the committee level. Now is the time to have those conversations. If there's anybody that's looking to buy, looking for something that, you know, throughout the city, now is the time at the committee level so we can kind of keep this moving. Everybody kind of has a Gantt chart or timeline out in front of them. I think one of the key dates, if everybody flips the page and looks at the second full week in October, is when we would like to have our budget workshop. The 11th, we already have an RDA meeting scheduled, but I'd like to tentatively put something in the books, either the 10th, 12th, 13th, or 14th. If there's any dates that work or don't work for anybody, that will be a considerably longer meeting. But it would be just the budget workshop and that would be it. So if anybody wants to take a look at that, and I would appreciate that you would email me or myself or Amber or Treasure, and we will try to get that worked out amongst everybody. And if anybody would approve, or I guess, earlier in the day, later in the evening, I would expect it to be three, three and a half hours long. So a seven o'clock meeting gets it running pretty late. So, I just wanted to, I'm sorry.
They could have a date by this Friday.
Yes, if we could get something laid out by this Friday, that'd be ideal, so, all right. That's all I have unless anybody has any questions about it.
On the back of your workshop, it's the one in...
Yeah, no, I know.
Be a Monday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Moving on to the Med Center information, okay, we'll start with the number E then, the Operations Transfer Agreement.
Yes, everybody received in their packet the addendum for the transfer agreement. I think everybody has that with them. I am going to, if it's okay with the Madam Mayor and the council, turn this over, Sam is with us. There is, I, there's four bullet points to this, if everybody got a chance to look at it. One, three, and four do not have any sticking points. Two has some sticking points with our buyer, and I am going to let him speak to those sticking points. And we will take it when Sam has completed. So, Sam, the floor is yours.
Sure, you know, in last, the meeting we discussed some changes to the contract. And what we're discussing here is in regards to the accounts receivables. You know, kind of going back to my partner and attorneys, that cash that we are discussing, we were counting on that to help us cover some of the operating losses coming in. So, you know, that just, is just one, I guess, you know, of the four changes to the contract that I guess I would like to bring back up for discussion. I would like to, you know, just again, for the board to consider that in taking over and buying this facility, not only are we paying the purchase price for the property, plus doing a renovation project, we're also going in anticipation of losing money month over month until we're able to turn it around. I know it is, you know, pretty significant, the cash that, you know, we'd be collecting from closing versus what we were discussing last week in terms of waiting 60 or 90 days. But that's the one piece, you know, again, regarding the COVID funds, you know, even closing date. I forgot the fourth point of hand, but that was the one question I guess I had for the council.
So, clarify for me, Sam, you, for the services provided in August, that might get paid in September, you want to keep that money? Is that what you're trying to say?
Correct. I'm asking that as of closing day, that we should be able to start collecting on everything and using that cash flow, yes?
I don't know if that's fair to the city, we put our resources out to earn that money. We're paying the people to work there for that month, so I believe the city deserves that money, to be frank. I know that it would help you.
Yeah.
But we're already talking about putting out a substantial amount of money to help you keep going and retain your people, so I think the city has already done a benefit to you.
Yes.
So, that's just my two cents worth of it.
I would...
I guess I'd lead with a question, Sam, do you have any, like what anticipated when you were talking with your attorneys, and I know that some numbers have been thrown around, but do you have a ballpark estimate of what those dollars are that would be, whether it be, I think in our last meeting, we discussed 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, the month of August, whatever they may be. But do you have an anticipated ballpark as far as guess, estimate of what those, that dollar figure is?
It's probably around $250,000.
Okay, so 250. I would, I totally understand and get where you're coming from, and believe me, I agree. Generally speaking, I mean, just point out a couple of things, when these types of things happen, it's, once the sale is done and complete, it is what it is, and there's no going back afterwards. But this is kind of a unique situation with a city-owned, municipality-owned, you know, business or enterprise. So, I could argue both sides of it. To your point, Steve, we paid for those services and the employees, but then again, this is a sale, right? So I could totally, I could go on either corner. But to kind of reiterate, one of the things that Steve had said is, you know, and a couple of the other bullet points that we're talking about here, is through the retention package, you know, it's quarter of a million dollars that we are essentially giving back to the employees of the medical center that, for all, you know, intents and purposes, we don't have to. We don't have to do that, we don't have to do the zero to three, three to five, you know, retirement deal, and that's, you know, up to an additional $100,000, and then, you know, covering the WRS, as well as, you know, that retention package, all in, I think we're estimating to the tune of like four, $450,000-ish dollars. That we don't have, I mean, if we didn't want to, we don't, we don't have, we could keep it all, if we wanted to be, you know, for lack of better terms, greedy, but we're not. We want to give it back to the people, give it back to the associates, and really, again, to reiterate, set you up for long-term success. So, again, that's kind of a long-winded opinion slash question, but I would throw it back to you, like, is everything else looked okay from your perspective, the other bullet points that we're talking about? I would assume anyways, right?
Yeah, and 100%, I, you know, I think that's great that the board is considering putting forth this retention package. Certainly, you know, it certainly will help me. Going into this and kind of why we, you know, put this into the OTA originally was in anticipation of some of the operating losses, you know, that we would be able to start collecting right away. So that was something that we had planned. So that's why I'm kind of saying, you know, with the other points, obviously, but I'm asking if we can reconsider on this one amendment, to kind of keep it the way that it stayed, as stated in the contract, that I would take that over.
Okay. Any, is there a way, and I don't know if there was any creative solutions from your team to help with that, is it just a flat bullet point number two or three, whatever, we're on E2? That it's just a, nope, it's got to be the way it is, or I guess, is there a way to get creative of maybe taking, splitting it, right? Whether it be absies or a little bit of skin in the game, if we're willing to say okay to that and give you the full amount, would you be willing to maybe offset a portion of the monies or funds that we're looking to put into a, for more... The retention package? Because then again, I mean, from a cash flow perspective, right? You know, quarter of a million dollars is going to be sitting in a, an account, of which, if my math is correct, you're not even, you're going to be at 50% capacity all the way up to month eight-ish. That 100% portion doesn't go out until after 12 months as proposed, I think you did 3, 6, 9, 12?
That is correct.
So, from a cash flow perspective, you know what I mean? That quarter of a million, it'll be 100% of it there in the beginning. A very small portion of it the first three months, six months. I'm just, I'm thinking aloud here, guys, Sam, is that, if we're able to say, instead of us doing the full 250, maybe split it down the middle, 100, 150, something like that? Could that work?
If I might, I guess, listening to the discussion, it would seem to me that we can, we can take one, three, and four off the table, so we're specifically talking about two. We're talking about about $250,000. And as you pointed out, Scott, that come September 1st, he's going to own the place. And that begs the question, he's committed to employing everyone working there. He's committed to allowing us to capture some of the, what's the, on the COVID thing, I don't, what's the acronym? ARPA funds or whatever that is? Yeah, huh?
That piece was not removed from the agreement.
Yeah, that's number, that's number four.
The all other COVID funds are still there, there is no such thing as an acres act.
All right, well, I don't, I, that was a typo or error or something. John, you know, let's not, let's not argue over the terminology, but that was...
It's contract.
Well, but that was the intent, we can change that word, John, it's not, it's not granted, it's paper, it can be changed.
I understand that.
All right. My point is, is that at September 1st, the employees are his. If we forego this $250,000 of future receivables, effective September 1st, why then are we obligated to provide him with a retention package when he could certainly turn around and take that $250,000 and apply a retention package of his own choosing? We don't need to have a direct, any direct impact in that. In other words, he's already committed, or will be committing in this document, to employing those people, they have jobs. And if he elects to, as the new employer on September 1st, to encourage those people to stay and retain, then it's kind of over to Sam to figure out how he wants to retain those people, whether it's through wages, benefits, or how, or whatever. Not our responsibility after September 1st. I'm, again, I'm throwing this out as, as a potential solution to what we see as a problem with number two. We are, we don't necessarily need to commit to giving up $250,000 in receivables after September 1st, and $250,000 of retention. You know, that's a, that's a clean trade right there, on a money standpoint. And then if Sam elects to figure out or offer retention program to his employees, not city employees, his employees, then that's his prerogative, and we have nothing to do with it. Because after September 1st, we don't have anything to do with it. So, there's that option. On the other hand, if we can't come to agreement on point two, on the receivables, we already have a signed contract that says he does receive those receivables. He can reject this amendment completely and go with the signed document, is that correct, Sam? That would obligate you to an August 14th closing date, but that's his option, not ours. We offered to extend that option as a convenience to him by 15 or 16 days because of some of his funding issues, getting his dollars all lined up. That's a, that's a win for everybody. We've got this, contentions on point two, point three, is the employment agreement that was modified, that outlines that he's going, is committed to hiring all of those people. So there isn't this, there isn't this hair on fire, everybody's going to get fired. That's off the table, that's a win for everybody, that's a win for the employees at the, at the Med Center, that's a win for Sam, that's a win for the city. And we've got point four on the COVID thing, notwithstanding that somebody screwed up what, screwed the spelling up, I see what they did, they transpose the A and the C on acres, it should have been care.
Yep. Care is up there.
All right, so, but that's, that's the only place that that was, that was, that was screwed up, and that's the word that I selected, John, that can be changed.
And it doesn't matter if that word gets changed, is what I'm saying, is that all the verbiage that I had issues with, and that is the nonspecific other COVID-19 funds, all of that has remained in the contract. And that was the, that was the verbiage I asked be removed from the contract, so that it did not get into the ARPA dollars. But that has remained throughout. So I would take issue that, you know, the COVID funds are protected, they are not, and I wish Tony were here, he was supposed to come back and tell us.
He was supposed to be here, and yes, he had a conflict with today's date, and he was not able to be here tonight.
Did he mention anything about this particular verbiage?
Yes, and I think what, what happened, John, is it was supposed to be struck, it was just overlooked, I think is what happened. That, and talking with Sam, and talking with Tony, everybody is in agreement that that can be struck from the contract. Nobody is looking to take the city's or the utility's ARPA funds from the city, or from the utility. It just was overlooked, it has not been struck yet, but I think that's something that can be very easily taken care of. And I apologize for that, I know that was one of the asks you had at the finance and personnel meeting.
I tried to be very specific in the language.
Correct.
So, those are my thoughts. I, I, you know, I, again, this goes back to, are we being greedy or are we being smart about this whole thing? Do we want this to proceed, and do we want to proceed with this with some, with some bit of congeniality between the city and a brand-new resident and a brand-new business owner? Or are we going to sit and try and claw back every single dime that we can out of this, irrespective of what makes a good contract? It's like selling a house, guys, there's, there's a point, at some, at some point where, when the guy, when the guy that wants to buy your house and his inspection says you need a new roof, it's going to cost you some money to complete the sale. This is very similar to, you know, it's not necessarily 100% analogy, but it is similar to that. It is, it is a, it is a, do we want to complete the sale, and how do we want to complete it? Do we want to complete it by being complete dinks about it, or do we want to be congenial and figure out a way to work through these things?
There are two parties involved with this. Would you agree?
Yes, the city and Sam. And he's expressed his view, and we also, we also, we also have, we also are doing this in a public forum, which is right and correct, as opposed to sitting in an office and hammering this out over coffee, or going down to a bar and having a couple of drinks and hammering out an agreement.
What's the relevance of that?
Well, the relevance of that is that we could be hammering this out, that's a, that's a private industry sale versus a city sale to a private individual.
We are required to work.
That is exactly what I said, John, I did.
I just, I want to let the council know, and maybe it's clear, maybe it's unclear, okay? I see everybody's side of things, the, on, the, the, this is an addendum to the original contract, that two parties, the city of Algoma, as the seller and the buyer, have already entered into, okay? This is an addendum to it. So if council decides tonight to not come to an agreement, and we want to sign this as-is, the buyer can bring this back to his legal team, and they do not have to sign it, okay? Then the buyer and his legal team would have to sit down and say, okay, we're going to close this thing, instead of September 1st, we're going to close as the contract originally states, August 14th. Now, I don't want to tell you, you're in a rock, between a rock and a hard spot, but we already have entered into a contract that has this literature not struck out of it, or not changed. This is an addendum to it, okay?
Can I, can I just ask just point of clarification, is it, the fact that that two is in there at all? Or is it the specific verbiage that's used, like, the 120 days past closing, I mean, and that was changed to 30 days, or is it, is it all or nothing, or is there room for an amendment to the amendment?
You know, when I negotiated the contract, there was some different, you know, obviously I wanted to, you know, to make the deal a little bit sweeter, we're going into something that, you know, is losing, it's going to take some time to turn around, and there were some different conversations around, you know, it was a, you know, let's quote, some different ideas of what the city can do to help me as the buyer coming in. And some of those ideas that we discussed were, you know, you know, seller financing, we discussed, you know, tax abatements, there were different conversations that we've had along the way. This is kind of what, you know, we agreed to in the agreement, in regards to, you know, me coming in, I would say is, this was, I guess, you know, gave me a good advantage just getting started. So, you know, that's, that's really my take in it.
Okay. Going back to what I had asked before, as far as, if this was struck, that's obviously a lump sum of monies, right, receivables. Is there any willingness, and again, I don't know, I know it's just fresh, brand-new idea, but would there be any willingness to offset that employee retention package in lieu of this addendum, you know, that being struck from there? I'm just, I'm trying to come to a, an agreement.
The two things are different, just that, you know, you know, this, the way I saw it was, you know, helping us work with some of the, you know, operating capital, because we do anticipate, again, month over month, a very significant loss until we can, and there's a bigger project, that we're adding a lot of private rooms to the facility. And with that, we believe we can increase occupancy and get revenue up, and along with, you know, you know, really being able to focus on many sides of the business, we believe this business can be turned profitable and cash flow, but during that time period, this was helping. The retention piece is very important, that too, you know, the employees, it's definitely, you know, something that I was very grateful for, and it's a great project, I just don't know that I would say, you know, that they're the same. Once again, I would work my hardest, you know, to do my own retention type things, I don't know if it would be to the dollar amount the city had proposed in year one, but certainly anything that I can possibly do. You know, I plan and still do plan on doing, to try to make it as good as an environment as possible for the employees and get back in every kind of way.
And I don't mean to mix the, because there's four different segments on here, right? Bullet points, that, you know, C, D, E, F, that we want to get to, but there's overlap in there, right? For this specifically with the addendums, we have to either, you know, come to an agreement. Okay, yes, we accept it as proposed, as Matt just said, and send it as is, and it'll probably get denied. Or making, you know, an adjustment to that amendment to your request, taking out number two. But that may have a direct impact on, once we get down to the retention package.
Can I get a clarification, Scott, not to interrupt you, but this $250,000 that we're talking about, the revenue, where did this fall into the city's coffers? Where, what I'm trying to say is, has it ever been discussed what we're gonna do with that money when we collect it? Is it already in a budget somewhere? Is it already? How, how does that loss of that money that we're gonna now let Sam collect affect the city?
Per the original agreement, it has zero effect.
It's services rendered is what it is, so...
Yeah, I, I get that, but did we?
It's, it's not budgeted.
Did we plan to collect $250,000, and does that affect our city budget somehow?
No.
So you're really not...
No.
I guess, yeah, we're not losing anything.
Correct.
So...
It's, if you go back to the original contract, it states from closing day forward, everything that is collected goes to the buyer.
So that kind of puts a little different spin on it.
The service cost of money to render though, right? We were obligated to pay for the wages and whatnot.
We paid the power bill, the light bill.
It's reflecting, so it's not nothing. It's not like it's just a wash. It's actual, it's accounting for the services. That's what the point is.
Correct.
Correct.
And again, I, I don't want to get into the point where we move on from this and have my intentions, you know, the thinking of the folks that, you know, not only on the audience, but that are working up there. I don't want to tit-for-tat, and I don't want to go down the road of what Jake had, you know, Alderman Maring had proposed before. We're, oh, well, we're gonna lose two fifty.
That wasn't a proposal.
No, no, no. I, I'm just saying, the example that you provided, and I don't, I know for a fact, Jake, that you don't want that either. I feel pretty good saying that everybody up here doesn't want to take away, to make up for something that we think that we're losing. So that is my whole discussion, or, you know, ideas that I threw out there, Sam, was I'm pretty sure if I asked you a very plain, simple, you know, straightforward question, if we ripped the $250,000 out of the retention package away and just said, you know what, we thought we were gonna get this, and now we're not, so we're just gonna scrap it, do you think that's gonna help or hinder you? Pretty simple. It's gonna...
It would not be as good for me.
Correct. That's why I'm trying to, you know, is there room where we can split the difference somehow creatively? Where there's a will, there's a way.
I'm looking at it that we're, he has taken a business that is failing. We all know it's failing because it's not paying its bills. He's taking all this risk, and he's paying all these bills now from the time of closing. I'm okay with him keeping that. I might be the only one that's okay with this, but he is taking a business that's failing and gonna stick money in it, more rooms and remodeling. He's gotta get money for that. And if this helps him, we had no problem doing this for the employees with the retention package and all that. And we all want that for the employees. But if this keeps him running, that he doesn't say, oh, well, now, a year from now, I gotta close because I can't, I can't do it. So I think we should just take that B out, if that's a deal breaker here. That's just my opinion.
John, were you trying to say something? I, I have one question I want, since we paid the employees and all the work to get up to it, is the cost of doing the insurance and all the collection, you're bearing that cost of actually doing the insurance work to get the money? Because when, when, what, what work we do in July, we bill at the end of, we have to do insurance forms and all that. Are we gonna be paying somebody to do the insurance work to get you the money? Or are you paying the person to do the insurance work? Does that make sense what I'm trying to say?
So I think what she's asking is if, if we perform all of these services in the month of August, and we don't do our billing until September, who is doing that billing? Because as of September first, he would have ownership. So is, is him and his staff doing that billing for all of those services rendered in August?
Yeah.
Or are we doing that?
It would be his staff.
At the very least, we're, we're retaining Carol.
Correct.
To do paperwork, to finish off everything that's involved with the city and the nursing home. Would you take on that responsibility?
Carol?
Carol.
Oh, of course.
But she's, she's not...
Well, her W, her W-two stuff, we still have to do that.
Yeah, we're paying above and beyond. It's a fixed dollar.
We've contracted her as a subcontractor. Well, I guess we couldn't subcontract her at the end. So we had to keep her for the month.
Dana is an employee.
But can we work something there where he pays her that extra? Above and beyond her salary?
But he would be paying her then to perform our end-of-year services.
Yeah, so I don't understand it, so I don't want to get too involved.
Yeah, that's getting out there, a little bit. Because we're retaining her to stay, to close out the books from closing day till the end of the year, and after the end of the year to get through the audit to make sure everything is closed out. If we went back and...
More than just...
Yeah.
Got it. How are we free not messing up anymore?
Yeah.
Well, again, the questions are all, the questions are all, have all been directed at, how do we keep our hands on that $250,000? And I'm kind of with Kevin on this whole thing, and have been from the standpoint that come September first, he's, he's flying on his own. And he has to, he has to operate that business. And you, you, you just, you don't ask somebody, you don't sell your business to somebody and then say, oh, by the way, everything you, everything you make for the next one hundred and twenty days, you gotta pay us back. That, that, that's not the way that that's gotta work.
Typically, you wouldn't sell a business, though, and then say, hey, I worked last month, and you can collect my wages. That would not be typical.
Sam, will the employees have medical coverage September first?
Yes.
They will not have to wait a month?
No.
I, I just want to make that statement very clear. If we close on September first, you pay a month in ahead, a month in advance. So if we close on September first, every med board, or med, I'm sorry, facility employee would have insurance till the end of September.
Had the city paid for?
That the city paid for, because, well, yes, that the city paid for that came out of...
Their paycheck.
Their, there's a portion that comes out of their paychecks, just like any other employee. Just so that's clear with the council, that if we close on the first, if we would close on August fourteenth, they would have insurance till the end of the month, the end of August. If we close on September first, their insurance, because it would then be paid for till the end of the month. Just like it was paid for for August. There's a deduction out of their payroll, out of everybody's paycheck, depending on what kind of provider they have, what kind of insurance, single plan, family plan. There's a deduction, and then there's the portion that the city pays. Or, I'm sorry, the Med Center pays. I apologize.
So just, just a thought. If we just, if everything else is okay on the addendum, except that, and we, we agree to cross that off and not have that on the addendum, is there a reason why in the retention program that we can't scale back a little bit to make up some of that cost that, you know, that we thought the money was coming into? You know what I mean? As opposed to $250,000 or whatever we, with $260, whatever we agreed on, could we scale it back to, you know, 175 or, you know, something of that sort and rework the numbers for the retention program?
But we never knew that income was even coming in, because we never know what their income is.
Retention...
That's why I asked to clarify what, where the money was coming from.
The retention dollars were already, are already put aside. They're already there. We don't have to do additional work to fund the, I guess we're calling it retention now. But those are also city dollars that would be funding that. We're talking about taking a lump sum and paying it out in ninety-day increments, which then, you know, gives it a long, a year-long tail from the day that, you know, we have closed on the place and should have no further obligation. So in addition to not gaining anything for the work that was done in August, we will be paying for the retention. Unless we elect as a body to give no retention and no severance, you know, there's a question of what's gonna happen with that. The other thing is, is that I don't think that we have heard back from the lawyer on the PTO transfer.
Yes, we have. It's in there.
No, I saw it. The last note I saw was that normally it goes, it's paid at the time of transition. That he was looking, he was looking at the legality of doing something else.
My understanding was that that was going to be up to the individual, correct?
That was the more, kind of the last word I heard, is that it would be up to the individual.
Say they wanted money or they wanted vacation, basically.
It's in there. It's point C of point three. On closing date, old operator shall pay the new operator an amount equal to all the accrued but unpaid vacation, holidays, sick pay, and all other accrued but unpaid payroll obligations, including but not limited to all FICA withholding unemployment workman's compensation or other employment-related taxes, as well as the insurance premium obligations of the old operators with respect to the retained employees. So the, the transfer of, of PTO is the first line of that. And that is in there, and that is a, it is an absolutely terrific point. And it covers the...
He doesn't use the verbiage PTO, Johnny.
No, it's using archaic language, and we've already paid off the vacation, legacy vacation already, as a result of this being in the original agreement. What we were talking about was PTO specifically.
That is PTO.
Accrued but unpaid vacation.
That's PTO.
It's holiday vacation, vacation and sick. So with that...
Yeah.
It's taken care of.
That's how I read it as well.
Yeah, it says all other accrued but unpaid payroll obligations. That would be a payroll obligation.
All right, well, not to be the one to
So we have, yeah, we have to do a...
Move this forward pretty fast, but if, if we're willing to strike, or strike just number two, is there, do you feel that there's any legitimate, Sam, that you can offset a retention package by, let's just say, again, not even fifty, fifty, but would you be willing to set aside $50,000 into that retention package?
Yeah.
Is that acceptable? I mean, it's not to, to offset, so then instead of doing two fifty, we'd do two hundred and...
You pay, you pay the last payment or whatever it was hoped to be.
Obviously, it's, we're talking about two dollar amounts that are vastly different, but at least it's showing you good faith.
Very good faith.
Because I don't want it to get to the point where we have to take away from what we want to do to help people in the facility. Is that...
Yeah, I, I...
Should have asked for more.
No, I said...
Said yes, waited for not.
Always, always...
It's gonna be a small matter we're gonna do. We're gonna, we're gonna do our best to, you know, get back and do nice things and continue that retention far beyond the first year.
Always swing for the fence, Scott.
I just, I want to get under there. No, I, I, I think that, that means a lot, and again...
Yeah, it shows very good faith.
Well, so, so, so I guess, I guess at this point...
What I would ask the council then, excuse me, Alderman Maring, what I, what I would ask the council to do then is to approve, if so chosen, with striking number two completely out, making the change on item four that was overlooked to begin with on the COVID payments, right? That, that needs to be struck out of there. And making a motion that the council would be okay to adopt this. And then we would send it off after those were struck out to his legal team.
And then bring it back, another addendum?
You wouldn't see another addendum. It would be adopted.
Where, where would it say that we were gonna split?
You would be doing that right now. That's what I'm asking. If the council so chose not to, the, the next time this would come before you would be at finance and personnel.
Where would we come up with that $50,000 from Sam?
I think, I think that we would discuss under the retention portion of the meeting. Instead of trying to build this into the addendum, I think that just makes it dirty.
I'm fine.
Or, or more complicated. I would ask then if we take the $50,000 conversation, we have that as part of the retention.
Perfect.
That's why I wanted to preemptively ask, before we get to that bullet point, to make sure it was gonna be at least the conversation.
So then, so then the motion should say, move to strike number two
From the addendum.
From the addendum. Adjust the verbiage on the COVID portion of the addendum to reflect, John, the, the verbiage, you could give the correct verbiage to Aaron so that...
Twenty-eight A, changing the, whatever word number that would be in sentence, acres to cares.
Acres to cares. But then there's also something that John wanted in there? He wanted something struck.
Yep.
What did we, what did we want struck?
The term other COVID-19 funds.
Where, can you have A, B, C?
It's in A right now.
It's in A.
All the way to A, right after acres.
There are three, there are three mentions of it that I can see.
And all of those should be struck.
The other COVID funds. Okay. Yeah, that's in part of the motion, and then with those, with those corrections, authorize Matt and/or the mayor to sign this addendum today.
It would not be signed today. This will go to Tony. He wasn't, not able to be here. So these changes will go to Tony. There's dates and everything that need to be put in there. And then, so that would be dated as of probably tomorrow's date in the first paragraph of the whole addendum. So there's, would be some verbiage added into there. And then number two would be completely struck. The changes would be made on number four. Then he would send that draft over for us to look at. We would make sure everything is okay, sign it, and then it would go to the buyer's legal team.
After the draft has been corrected, to allow Matt and/or the mayor to sign the document without approval of the council. Yeah, because we're approving it now.
Correct, with those changes, Mayor.
Yeah, with those changes.
Is that your motion?
Is that your motion?
That's a motion, yeah.
I'll second your motion.
Okay.
All right, let me just recap this before we, before we ask for discussion and before we take a roll call. All right, so Alderman Maring, seconded by Alderman Schmidt, has made a motion to strike number two from the addendum and has also made a motion then on four, section twenty-eight, and adjusting the verbiage for the other COVID-19 funds to be struck and changing acres to cares. In addition, after those changes have been made, they authorize the administrator and/or the mayor to sign the addendum.
That's, yeah, that's it.
It sounded better what she said.
It did, because I had to double-check with John to make sure I was covering the right ground.
Is another discussion ready for roll call?
Discussion, anybody, I guess, yeah.
Roll call.
Roll call, okay.
Havik.
Epstein.
Fuhr.
Yes.
Maring.
Yes.
Lattenbach.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Everden.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Yes, Havik, six with one O C.
Okay, are you ready to move on to the retention package issue? Yeah, see, I like the way the new retention package comes out. I, I like the way it was put together. I think it's gonna serve the purpose of keeping the people for a longer time by paying the money out over a year that people will stay on longer. So I, I think it, it was very well thought out.
But then the numbers would need to change then to reflect the two hundred thousand then as opposed to the two forty-two if he's gonna put the fifty thousand in, is that correct? Is that what we're thinking?
Well, now the money's gonna go in a special fund, right? To put this together, so we would just be asking him to put part of the money in that fund.
Okay.
Okay, good. What do, what do we, I guess the question then would be to Sam, uh, if, if you're okay, did you see this proposal by the way, anyway? You did? Okay, because at le- at least wanna make sure that we all talked about the same thing. We got a proposal for two hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents in retention fund. My understanding is that, uh, a escrow account would be set up, a joint escrow account would be set up for you to administer for the retention, targeted specifically for the retention of employees on this schedule. So, uh, would you have to, would you be contributing that fifty grand into that escrow fund at the same time? How would, how, do we need an agreement on that? Where, where are you on this, Sam?
I think that's fair. I think I'll put up at the fifty thousand in escrow along with the other escrow monies.
Okay.
And then at the end of the year, hopefully it's all gone and it served its purpose, but if there's anything left over, I'll send, cut a check back to the city.
Okay, so from the two.
I, I guess I just wanna interject here just a second and, and bring up a couple key points here because this total dollars comes to two forty-two, two-one-two and fifty cents like Alderman marrying stated, but some of that monies is FICA that needs to be paid out as part of this, okay? This can't be just a cash payout, so there's FICA in there. Another part of this that was discussed and I was advised at the finance and personnel that we would put this away, and I just wanted to, to bring light to this, that we would put this in a joint account that we would pay this out and at the end of twelve months, whatever was left would come back to the city. Now the buyer's putting fifty thousand dollars in.
He just stated that he would send, still send back what's left to the city.
Thank you, I apologize for.
Yeah, and, and.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring that to light.
No, yeah, I heard, but I heard that. And then the FICA would come out as the payments went out anyway, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
All right, now, who's administering? Do we need, now, now that we've, now that we've got a sidebar deal going on here, sort of, I'm trading for Willie Mays and I'm gonna give you a player to be named later kind of thing, do we need to have a, 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 a written agreement, uh, uh, drawn up?
That's what I would now do with this. If, if that's the agreement now, I would send this to the city's legal to put verbiage to this of how that would be spelled out and how this would get paid out.
Who would need specific employee names, dollar amounts, I mean, everything needs.
Who's actually been there, so it's.
Right, that is correct.
Who's administering this program?
That's, it, it would be a joint between the, the city, the seller and the buyer. We would draw it up that it was, that we had observation of it, obviously.
I think your question is who's cutting that check?
Do you want to.
Who's doing, who's doing the paperwork to make sure that, you know, obviously the calendar's gonna be important, but, um, but that's all we're dealing with is the calendar. We're not talking about any kind of circumstances or extenuating circumstances or whether it becomes part of somebody's estate or anything like that, right?
Correct.
That is correct.
It's, it's a calendar, it's a calendar, uh, payout deal.
If there's somebody that's either terminated, quits, leaves, gets into an accident, that's, those funds would go back to the kitty, essentially.
They'd come back to the city at the end of the call.
Exactly.
Yeah, this, this is money they have to earn, it's not their money today.
Right.
So to be a.
Wait, wait, wait a minute, this is money they have to earn, but they've already earned it by staying through to, to, to closing.
No, uh.
No, this is for staying the whole year.
This is for staying for another year, this.
So we're extending their employment agreement with the city by funding a retention program?
Not at all.
Not at all. And we're not giving them a severance package because they didn't lose their job.
We're giving them an incentive to stay and work for Sam, to give Sam a chance that maybe everything would work out. We don't know, we don't work for Sam, but we're trying to help them with this.
So just to stay on the legal side of things then, uh, who's ever monitoring that, then should it have to have a double signature on those checks? You know, like would Ginny and, and Sam then have to both sign those checks to make sure that everything's on the up and up?
Just to, I think what needs to happen is, I think, it, it, briefly talking with Tony, but we chewed off a lot in two weeks to get back to you for tonight, okay? But briefly with talking with Tony, what I think, I believe what happened is Sam would give the city a submittal for three months are up. He would submit X employees that are full-time, X employees that are part-time that made their three months, he would then take a draw from the city. Six months.
Or from the escrow, yeah.
That is correct.
Yeah.
That is correct. Then he would take a, a second draw and, and getting all the way, obviously four times, his fourth draw would be like, we're done. The fifth draw would be more or less closing that account back to the city.
Correct.
He would also be withdrawing the social security tax and all that kind of stuff because he's actually paying it through payroll then, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
It'd be part of that.
So it'd be both pieces.
Yep.
So, is it, let's say they're part-time now at September first when they get it, but then for whatever reason they, they go full-time, uh, maybe, you know, you need more staffing or whatever, uh, are they, are they held to the part-time level of compensation for retention or then they now enabled to have the, the full-time level of retention compensation?
I think you could say the same thing, it could go the other way.
Sure.
I, you know, I, I know exactly what you're saying. I think some up and leave, some are, so what we did is we took the current employees today, fifty-seven of them, I believe, um, and I apologize because I have four sheets in front of me, twenty-four employees that are part-time and thirty-three that are full-time. You could see some go the other way, you could see some, you know.
Some will quit, some will retire.
Yep, but when they, the day that they started, I believe is the way we would, would structure it, the day they started what they were, were, is what they would be.
And I know, we talked about it last week when we were talking about the most valuable assets, which I think it's kind of refers to think about people as assets, but I, I get the point. I know you're not under any obligation, but like there are, there are tenured employees that have been there for, for a long time and along the way that say something does happen out of their control at work where they don't make this one, you're, obviously it would be no, no obligation to do it, but I would be hopeful that, um, considerations of circumstances might be something. And again, you know, you won't have any obligation to it, but I think that if someone dedicates twenty, thirty years and then they're broke down to the point where they can't continue to perform in that capacity, um, that's a different thing than somebody quitting, you know, and it's, it's out there, um, you can do, do with it what you will, but I think that it, it's a reasonable consideration, um, when you look at that, but, uh, not that that has any bearing on this particular thing, it's just, I don't, I think it's important that, uh, we see them as, we see their value all the way through their service and in, including afterwards, because if they're, if they're broke down as a result of having contributed to, to the city and, you know, to the, the business, um, what justness is there in, in not providing that compensation to them?
To your point, it could very easily be added in the verbiage because the contract's gotta be written up agreement and, and I totally get what you're saying, but at the end of the day, if it's gonna take two people or two signatures, you know, whether it be the mayor and, and Sam, you know, that's a little star, small writing down at the bottom of the agreement. Extenuating circumstances do happen and may be, um, subject to, uh, subjugation by, you know, current management, you know, city prior management, you can add that as a asterisk down at the bottom.
Sure.
I mean, I totally get it. They get to month ten and they fall and broke, break their hip and they can't work for the next two months, I mean, come on. I, everything that we've, all of the conversations that we've been having for the last six, eight months, whatever it's been, I mean, do I think that, A, do I think we as a city would not do that? Absolutely not. Do I think Sam would not? I mean, the funds are there, right?
Well, I, I only bring it up because it was actually addressed particularly that it was said that it was, it was, it was their choices, I believe it was. I'd have to go back and look at the tape, uh, from the finance and personnel. That's why I bring it up, because it was, it was stated that too bad, so sad, basically.
Well, I, I don't, I think we're talking about retirement.
Leave of employment.
I, and I could be wrong and, and if I'm, if I'm wrong, I'll, you know, I'll take it back, but I'm pretty certain that there was a specific note about injury and at that point it was, it was choices and too bad, but I'm, I mean, that's water under the bridge if you're, if we're amenable to that consideration and it's not, I mean, it's not that, it's not even addressing any considerations about your, your, your character or your intentions and whatnot, because I mean, I, I've not gotten any impression that, you know, you also need to become some draconian like, you know, but I just wanna make sure that when we see the value of employees, that we see that also as having quality of life beyond the walls in which we, we employ them, in particularly since they served the city theoretically for, for years, decades.
How, how quickly can we get something drafted up, do you think, finance and personnel? Couple of weeks, okay.
I got one question.
Go ahead.
So at time of closing, we're gonna write a check out for two hundred thousand, put it in a separate account. He, Sam's gonna write a check out for fifty thousand, put it in this account, this retention account? Is that where it's going?
No.
No.
So I think the way it would be drafted, Kevin, and, and we have to check the legal side of things, obviously, but I think the way it would be drafted is every three months Sam would come to the city and ask for a draw.
Oh, we're just gonna write it in a check.
He would bring the paper documentation in to say X amount of full-time, X amount of part-time, this is my draw for the first quarter, so on the second quarter, third quarter. The fifth draw would be the city, everything should be paid in full after that fourth draw, the rest would come back to the city then.
So how does he get his fifty thousand to help ours?
Something we need to, to work through and draw it up.
Because if you had like a joint checking where Sam and the mayor would have to both sign, then that, every, at three months, mayor signs, he signs, they go through them all, okay.
That's something that I think we have to work through and, and, you know, I think Madam Mayor made a comment about, you know, the taxes, everything, there's FICA, um, because this would be part of the payroll.
Social Security.
You know, we have to close the books on this thing so they're no longer our employees, right? So I think if that is the intent, that we take this two forty-two, two fi- twelve fifty less fifty thousand, that would be the buyer's contribution and, and more or less everybody's happy with this breakdown of part-time, full-time.
The payment and dollar amounts.
The payment, dollar amounts.
Yeah, I think it's, did a good job.
The, the, the number is one ninety-two, two-one-two fifty.
To be clear, there, uh, the way I read this, the FICA being separate, if they're, if we're saying they're getting a five hundred or a one thousand dollar check, they're getting that check and the FICA is above that, so their check will be five hundred dollars plus FICA. I mean, they won't get the FICA, but it won't come out of the five hundred, correct?
That is correct.
But what about taxes? Just so they're, they'll have to pay their taxes, correct?
That is, the taxes have to come out of it.
I just wanna clear that so that there's no question.
Be just like a stipend or, or bonus.
Yep, yep.
Whatever you wanna call it, the taxes would come off of it.
Forbowlize it out loud.
Correct.
Can you clarify where the one ninety-two, two twelve fifty is coming from?
That's the number on the retirement retention program.
Where are those funds?
Those funds are already been committed out i- i- in, in med center accounting.
Is that correct?
In the current, in the current funds at the med center.
Okay.
You should ask that, Jean, that question, she's in the audience.
Is that correct, Jean?
Actually, as Matt, he asked for all of our bank account balances today.
Yes, they are currently in the account today. So that would come, that's not, here again, so it's clear, this is not a budgeted item that is coming directly from the city, it is a budgeted item that is coming from the med center.
Yep, it was budgeted at, at the med center.
That is correct.
Before the board was dissolved.
That is correct.
Thank you.
What type of motion or?
I don't need any motion, I have, I think, directive to bring this back to finance and personnel. We have obviously two September first and then three months, um, but if that's everybody's agreement, that if you wanna make a motion, it could be just a, a motion to give the administrator a directive to work, to bring this back to finance and personnel for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, disapproved, okay. Then we're gonna go on to the retirement system benefits.
Everybody had that in their agenda, everybody had a chance to take a look at that. There is now a breakdown that was not there at finance and personnel, but there is a breakdown from zero to three years, there is a breakdown from three to five years and the total.
So the three to five, we had already anticipated that, dollar amount, the other.
Oh, yeah, three to five.
Yep.
Three to five, we had already anticipated that, that was the number up in the right-hand corner of the breakdown.
That is correct.
And, and this, this number, uh, forty-five, six sixty-nine looked different than what was on.
Well, it's gonna change as time goes on.
It was sixty-three.
There's some people that will, depending on when we close, there might be people that fall off of it that went over the five-year.
Ah, okay, all right.
If I figure this right and if I can say this, after the insurance that we don't have to pay of thirty-three-six and the retirement that was supposed to be sixty-three, to make this work, we're looking for nineteen grand, that's it. Nineteen thousand dollars makes this almost exactly what they were budgeting to begin with. Does that make sense? They budgeted sixty-three.
You're talking about the insurance.
Yeah, uh, we don't have to pay that insurance anymore, but that money was already through the med center already budgeted out, so we're not looking to take another thirty-three. We're just, we're looking to use that, does that make more sense?
I kinda, yeah, I understand where you're coming from.
So I'm saying that we need nineteen more thousand dollars to make everything whole. Nineteen over what was budgeted to begin with.
Sixty-three was for the W R S, how much was for the insurance?
Thirty-three-six.
Yeah, but we still, we're not getting rid of that sixty-three total, right?
No, it's.
But that was also funds that were set aside.
Yeah, I'm, I'm seeing it was set aside money and we would need.
Twenty grand, which originally, I think last time we talked to, was, we thought it might be thirty or forty, something like that, okay. That makes sense. Do you?
Is that right though? I mean, that first month, because we're still obligated for, for September payment.
They're gonna have.
What we were talking about before, I just wanna make sure that that is in fact.
Yep, so we'll, we'll get a check for the September payment in August.
Okay, okay.
It's kind of mixed up, but it's just numbers.
I have a question, would we pay W R S for employees with less than three years? Does that payment just include their portion of it or is the city's portion also there?
The city's portion is there as well.
And what they don't get is the city's portion if they are.
Under, if they don't.
If they are not vested.
Correct.
That is correct.
Okay, so what happens to that city's portion that we've been paying?
It stays at W R S.
W R S gets it.
Okay, but what we're looking to do is repeat that payment for the, um.
So the.
For the employee as a, an additional payment by the employee?
Yep.
Yes.
As an additional contribution by the employee.
Would make a one-time payment.
So that gives them the five years of service of.
No.
No, just.
Doesn't give them the.
Just gives them what they lost.
Well, first thing is the zero to three. So if I've worked at the med center for one year and out of my check I've contributed a thousand dollars and the city's portion is.
Thousand dollars.
Uh, let's just say a thousand dollars, that's not, it's not equal. Uh, let's just say a thousand dollars, that's not, it's not equal like that, but let's just say it's a thousand dollars.
So, then we would pay.
We would be paying a thousand dollars in.
In addition to the thousand dollars we paid the first time we paid W R S.
And that is off the table.
And it's gone.
It's, doesn't come back to the city, it, it just.
It's gone.
It's gone, yep, but when they see their statement, they're always gonna see that on there, but they'll see that additional payment that was put in.
Who's, who gets to explain that to the employee?
Who gets to explain what to the employee?
So, they're not gonna be vested?
Correct, zero to three will not be vested.
So, then what's the advantage, because if you're not vested, you can't collect the pension.
It's paying them.
We're, we're making this way more difficult than it needs to be.
Can I say this?
One second, okay. Everybody pays in, a full, an employee of the city pays into their retirement, right? A portion of that comes out of their check, a portion of it we pay. If you retire in three years, all you get is your portion that came out of your check. Okay, the state put this in play years back to try to obviously retain state employees to keep them over that five-year home. If they have one, zero, starting today to five years, everything that they put in is their money, that's in their retirement. If they don't make that five-year date, everything that the city put in, in their behalf.
Goes to W R S.
Goes to W R S.
Got it.
This would be to make them whole of what they didn't make. There is no difference between the zero to three or the three to five. All we're doing is, so the original proposal covered the three to five years?
Right.
This is going from start date to five years. And all we would be doing is, if they put in out of their check a thousand dollars, they were losing that thousand dollars, we would give them that thousand dollars in turn.
I, I think you almost said that right.
You almost said that right. What happens then, if you put in a thousand dollars, that thousand dollars would still be there. If the city also put in a thousand dollars, it wouldn't be there until we went ahead and put it in.
Correct.
Under their name as an additional.
That is correct, as a one-time contribution, that is correct.
They're going from being an ESOP to a private industry and they're losing all of their vested interest from being a, you know.
They're, they're losing the city's match.
Yes.
They're not losing theirs.
And this would get the city's match, we're paying double, but it.
We're paying double, but.
Because they're going from a municipality owned to a private industry. So, the total difference is twenty grand. Is that?
Twenty grand above what they had budgeted out.
Correct. Any recommendations from the administrator?
You have me a little confused that there's twenty grand budgeted out because they had on their original proposal sixty-three, zero, thirty, and eighty-one cents. Our proposal is one hundred and thirteen.
I added the thirty-three thousand that they had budgeted for insurance that Sam said he was covering. So, I'm twenty above that total budgeted.
You're adding the sixty-three and the thirty-three, and then the twenty gets us whole to this one thirteen number.
Correct, that's how I came up with that number.
So, that being said.
How many employees do we have under three years?
Twenty-six, did you say?
It's a little difficult because we can't use any names, and that's why I, it, it's broken down the way it is broken down. Under three years would be.
Well, let, let me ask before you start going, you know, it's, it's.
Fifteen.
Fifty under three.
Fifteen, one-five.
Oh, one-five.
Yes, fifteen. Now, with that being said, you have to be, a, work over X amount hours to, to, you have to be able for, um, benefits to be able to enter into this as well.
Correct.
So, you're part-time or you're casual, they don't make this cut.
Right. They've, they've never signed up for it, so.
Correct.
Yes. Fifteen people with less than three years.
Three years or less.
And it's gonna be sixty-seven thousand?
Yes. Remember, your payments are a lot smaller because some of them have, you know, very little time vested.
Right.
Uh, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Okay.
Um, some of them have two thousand, six hundred and four dollars. Um, the biggest one at years of service that falls under three years would be seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And then you jump into the four-year and up category. I'm sorry, three to five years.
Well, the three to five years, we're dealing with separately. It's the sixty-seven thousand for the under three years that I'm looking at going, that seems like an awful lot. And nothing in the numbers that you gave me made that feel any better?
I'm, I'm gonna say again, it, it would've been a lot easier if I could've put this in front of you and showed years of service. I can't do that unless we go into closed session. If we're gonna talk about this package as a whole, then we can do it. But I can tell you that there is fifteen, one-five employees that fall from zero to three years. And then from three years and up to five, there is four.
That being said, since we can't go into specifics, does the administrator have a recommendation? Or would you rather have commentary from the council members before?
Go ahead.
Well, here's my question. The people that are zero to three years, we don't even know if they would've stayed for the whole three years if the city owned this thing. So, the person could be here a year and, and they're getting all this pension matching. I get the three to five, because you're in a job three to five years, you've already been working for a while. I don't know if I like this zero to three right now. And it is such a high amount, too. That's just my thought.
I, I've asked my questions.
I'll make one more comment. If you contribute money to your 401 and it does real good this year, you gain twenty percent. And next year it loses thirty percent. Did you lose thirty percent or ten percent?
I have a state retirement that's going up and down now, so I mean.
That's why I brought this up, that's how I picture it. If you put money in the 401 and it gains money one year, the next year you lose money, you think you lost all the money, not just the money you put in.
I get that, but I don't know if the employees were gonna stay here the full three years that were doing all this for this. I can get the retention, I get that. I don't know.
I, I think, in my opinion, they did the right thing by contributing to their retirement.
Then why did the board have three to five years and we switched it to zero to three?
I don't know why they split it up, you'd have to ask the board.
That's what I would like to know, John, you were on the board. You must've had a reason.
I would refer that question to Jean.
Jean, did you wanna say something?
When we were exploring that, um, Joan Gressel had, um, gotten, she had some information from W R S about doing a lump sum contribution, and the paperwork identified the three to five-year employee. So, when we were looking at that, that's why, and we believed that only three to five-year was where we could do this. Somewhere, somehow, somebody else has found out that you can do it under three-year.
And nobody has a magic eight ball, I mean, it's not as if we can say, okay, pay it. Do they stay, do they stay forever, do they quit? What happens when they do quit? Sorry?
I'm done. I mean, I've said enough.
Now, I guess this isn't a direct payment to the employee, this would be a direct payment to their, to their W R S.
Right.
Good, correct, I understand that.
Yep, so, if, if they quit and they decide to go withdraw, withdraw on it, which you need to have, you can't just go draw it. It's not like the stock market, you need to have, and even with reasonable, you get penalized on way more than what we would be putting in there. Even the three to five years.
Yep.
It, it's, I, I wanna say it's seventeen percent, don't quote me, but I wanna say. Jean, is it seventeen percent, I think you just had an employee check on it, correct? It is seventeen percent.
Okay. Any more thoughts?
I think if you do it, you, you do it for all, I mean, you, you can't know people from three to five that would stay past five anymore than you could before, three, you know, just reiterating your, your magic eight ball, uh, point. I mean, it doesn't make sense not to, to do it across the board, in my, my opinion.
Man, do you have any?
No, I'm still mulling this.
One of the things we should remember is that three to five vests them for full benefits, whereas just making the payment does not vest them for full payment. For full benefits under the program. It just increases the amount that they have in there that they can draw from.
Correct.
Yeah, that, that is correct.
That's an important distinction in this.
David, yes.
I don't know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm relatively ambivalent about this, I, I'm, I, I. On the one hand, I think we're bending over backwards, and I think on, on the other hand, those employees, whatever their, whatever their terms of service, zero to five or whatever, um, Sam is certainly gonna be setting up, uh, a, a, a 401K program for them to participate as a private business owner, uh, that's just the way it's done these days. And I, 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 I think, you know, it, it, sometimes life happens. And if you've been somewhere for a couple of years and you've got a small investment, uh, uh, I don't, I don't think even W R S even allows them to, uh, take those funds and roll it over into a 401K. So, they, you're gonna have a small benefit package of, of, tops of, what, ten thousand dollars sitting out there somewhere?
Two thousand?
Or two thousand dollars for, for, for the rest of your working life?
I mean, some of them, not a, all of them, obviously, some might have eight to ten, but.
If they get another job that is part of this W R S system, then they will just continue on as they were before.
That, and that is correct, and then they can go back into the W R S system and, and, and participate in that program in the future. I, 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 I've sometimes, I've kinda wondered whether we're just chasing ourselves down rabbit holes here. I, I don't know, I, I don't know which way to go on this, I really don't.
I, I would, I, I'd like to ask a question of Administrator Marsh. Jean, do you think that if we were to move forward with the zero to three and, and do the payout and put more in, do you think that that's going to be viewed as a benefit, is it, does it really matter, is it a big deal? For those, those fifteen individuals, is that gonna be a game changer? Is it going to be a camaraderie builder for, for them? No?
I, I, I don't think so, as just talking to employees, you know. I think they recognize that there will be a time, and Sam and I had this conversation today, that, you know, if they want to get into a retirement plan, they, they will be able to at some point. A lot of times, what we're only seeing are the, maybe the higher wage earners actually doing this.
Okay. I, 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 and again, I wanted your boots on the ground, you know firsthand, is, for these fifteen individuals, if we say, yeah, let's move forward to three to five, but strike the sixty-seven thousand for the zero to three, is that going to put a pretentious, is that going to create an issue where there is an.
Anxiety.
Correct.
I really can't predict that, I don't know that honestly, but I, I just know that the discussion that employees had with me was, well, will Sam have a retirement plan and that, so we talked about it today, and, you know, yes, it's coming. But, you know, this is something that if they wish to get into a plan, they can get into it. And they can, you know, I mean, a lot of those plans allow you to alter how much you're contributing as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? Make a motion to approve it or not approve it, or where are we going with this?
I would rather, I would, I tend to agree with Kevin, that, you know, sixty-seven thousand, you know, is a lot of money for the city and, you know, for employees that really, you know, so I would prefer a motion just to approve the three to five. But, again, that's just my thinking, because that sixty-seven thousand can be utilized, obviously, someplace else, too. And, you know, they're getting their retention, they're getting their insur, I mean, you know, they still have their jobs, they still have all of that going for them yet, you know, so, I mean, looking at trying to be more fiscal, fiscally responsible, that, that's just my thought right now, I, you know, that's, it's, knowing that that's a lot of money for, again, an unknown of, you know, are they gonna stay, are they not gonna stay, what, you know, when, and I agree, if somebody's been there three to five years, I think they like their job, they're, you know, the zero to three years is where you just never know if you're going to be able to retain that person or not, so.
Well, and a lot of those fifteen, zero to three employee, fifteen, zero to three, fifteen employees, I, do we know how many are full-time or part-time?
They, they all have to be, to, to be qualified.
Correct, so, okay, retention, yeah.
Right, right.
Jean, if you would've said that this would've been a deal breaker and created all sorts of problems, I would've said, let's do it, to Casey's point, do one for all, but if you, I, if we're just throwing money away for the sake of being super generous, I would agree.
The other thing there, too, is that, you know, these employees can be listed there as having been participants in the retirement system. They cut to casual status, which we have had a significant number of employees, just with their own personal lives and what's going on. They cut to casual status, they still have retirement taken out of their check, even though they're not working full-time anymore. Because once you're in, you're in. So, you know, that, and I don't know who is on that list right now that I could look at and say, this one's casual, this one's casual, and this one's casual. So, you know, here you are putting money in for people who are really not working full-time any longer.
I, I'd like, I'd like to, I'd like to move, I, I don't think that there's any big rush on this, is there? Is this something that we could mull over until finance and personnel, maybe? I'd like some more time to think about this.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's not, doesn't have to be done today.
I'm, 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 I, again, I, I would, I really have to, I really have to put my.
Could we get the clarification between the administrators on casual, whatever that last commentary was, I mean?
I, if, and to respect everybody, if we're gonna take this on an individual, full-time, part-time, casual, we're starting to get, then maybe we should consider going into closed session.
Got it.
If, if we're not gonna take it as zero to three and three to five, we're starting to kind of walk this edge of starting to put people out there.
Well, if we are tabling it to finance personnel, we can certainly go to closed session.
If that is the council's wishes, yes, we could, Alderman, Paddock.
I would move that we table it to finance and personnel.
Second.
All, all in favor of tabling it to the next finance meeting? Opposed? I'm unstable. Okay, then we have another item of the facility assessment.
So, that was brought forth, um, it was tabled, there was some, a redraft done, and everybody has it before them here tonight. Does anybody have any questions on that? And to, to reiterate, um, our, yes, our attorney did go through this, went through it line by line, looked at it. This is something that they need to keep on file at the Med Center in case there would be a, I wanna speak out of line, an audit.
These, these are handed over to state surveyors.
State surveyors, thank you.
I guess I would like to thank Jean for, uh, for going back and editing this. I, I much appreciate that.
So, then we would ask for a motion for adoption, unless there's any further.
So moved.
Is there a second from somebody?
A second, and also reiterate what, uh, Jacob just said, thank you, Jean, and Matt for working on it.
A second. And also reiterate what you said. Thank you, Gene, for the math for working through it.
Yeah, would you do a roll call on that then?
Mubertin?
Yes.
Pabick?
Yes.
Swedberg? Boor?
Yes.
Lattenbach?
Yes.
Schmidt? Naring?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Okay, and next, administrator's report, do you have anything to share with us?
Couple just quick things here.
Whoa, 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 uh, uh, I think we missed something here. I think we missed consulting agreement.
Where are you?
Oh, the operating
Yeah, that wasn't a part of your, right? For, for Sam to
For Sam to
To come on for a month and
That's just enacting part of the operations transfer agreement.
Yeah.
It's, it doesn't have its own line item on the agenda.
It must've fallen under E.
Yes, that is correct.
All right. So we need to, do we need to talk about that or are we okey-dokey?
You okayed it at the last meeting?
Yeah. So really, like our clerk had mentioned, it's really taking the verbiage that was in the agreement and just putting it forth.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure because I had, I had the document and I wanted to, wanted to make sure
You were ready to go?
Jake brought it up. Thank you, Jake. Um, one of the things that's in there, it talks about a, um, management and it talks about consulting. If he, if it's a management contract, that has a different meaning than a consulting contract in that in management contracts for nursing homes, he's running the whole thing. It's his license up on the wall and everything else and he's running it for the city. If it's a consulting contract, then that doesn't have to be done. And then my question became, do we have all of that in place to have a management contract as opposed to just a consulting contract?
What you have before you
I saw what's here, but it doesn't fit our
Spells out that he has oversight, but we are still operating under administrative march, administrator Marsh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, it's, it's already been approved, so there's not a great deal of discussion that we can bring to that table, so
So who's controlling the operations?
Administrator Marsh.
Okay. Do you wanna do your administrative things you wanted to talk about now?
Sure. Um, twenty-twenty-two Street Utility Project, Third Street, we finished blacktopping that on Friday, late in the evening. The signs came down. The last thing that is done is there will be some grass planting and EMAT to go down, um, Tuesday, Thursday this week. And completion of a punch list, that will not happen till after shanty days. And just so clarity to everybody, completion of the punch list will be anything that gets marked up between the start of the project and the substantial completion, which we're about a week ahead of schedule here. The eighth, I believe, was substantial completion. So cracks, anything broke, bent, blacktop that needs to be adjust, addressed, uh, concrete curbing, um, the way that things are seeded, that it's written in the contract that the contractor has to establish grass seed, or establish grass, I should say, not grass seed. So if that takes him three times to come out here and water it to establish grass, that's on the contractor. Um, so that's pretty, go ahead, John.
Did the contractor have set hours to operate in?
Um, so all we have is a, they can't start before our ordinance in the morning.
Which is
Seven AM.
So five o'clock this morning when they, they were offloading the painter, uh, with the semi right under my window was probably outside of that? The painter? They offloaded a big piece of equipment this morning. Marked up the, marked up the street and everything, and it said the Northeast Cement Company.
Is, is that
Did they load that, did they load that roller?
Maybe.
Was the roller that was parked there over the weekend?
I'd like, I'd like a point of order, please. That, I don't believe that that's cogent to a council discussion that is cogent as a resident to the administrator or Public Works or the police department. It's not a subject for the council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, redevelopment area, as discussed, um, August first, we close on our last property. I think we have, uh, four of them yet that still have tenants in them. Some of them have, will be in there till the end of August. Some of them could possibly be in there into September. There's obviously agreements and statute that we're working with on every one of them. I wish we could say that everybody's gone, but there's statutes of limitations and everything else as part of this project. But, uh, wrapping up the plans for the infrastructure work around that block, we are hoping by the end of next week, we should start to have finalization on some of that. Our holdup is going to be, um, getting, they need to go into every one of these houses and do an assessment on abatement, asbestos, lead paint. And obviously, we cannot go in these houses if there's still residency in there. They literally have to knock some glazing off windows, pound holes in the drywall ceilings. Um, it's not a, you know, they don't go in with a syringe and, and take a little water sample. It's a, quite invasive, um, the work that needs to be done. I'm not gonna say it makes the house uninhabitable, but it makes the house uninhabitable. Um, so soon as we get through that, so, um, Board of Review, I'm sorry.
Can that be started before everybody's out of their, out of their house, or is that something that they wanna go from house to house in, in one shot?
Ideally, when Eagle comes, they'd like to do three or four of them. So that's kind of what we've been trying to do. It's expensive for him. He has a bid, um, with Robert E. Lee to perform this work. Obviously, his bid isn't every time there's a house that becomes available to drop everything and chase out here. He'd like three or four of them. Um, I mean, obviously, it's all in the same block. It's not of, you know
To make it a full day is true.
At least half a day, three quarters of a day, instead of coming here to do one. Does that make sense? Yeah. So, um, Board of, Board of Review will be Thursday, August eighteenth, beginning at four PM here at City Hall. Please be sure to make your appointment with the clerk if you are planning on objecting your assessment or reassessment value. Apologize, your reassessment value. So upcoming election, the next election will be held Tuesday, August ninth, a week from tomorrow, at City Hall. Voting hours are from seven AM to eight PM. In-person absentee voting began June, July twenty-sixth at City Hall. City Hall is open from eight AM to four PM, Monday through Friday. The last day for in-person absentee voting is Friday, August fifth, at five PM. That day, the City Hall will be open that Friday till five PM. Um, we will have staff here for anybody that wants to come in and vote in-person absentee. So, and that is all I have for everybody.
Okay, the next thing, mayor's appointments, there are non-mayor's comments. I'd like to make one comment. I got a very nice letter from the governor thanking the city council and the downtown businesses for being so appreciative of him coming. He really enjoyed it. So I wanted to pass that on, that he was thankful to us. Okay, the next thing, agenda, anything special for the next meeting? Let Erin know what they are, if there's anything you wanna bring forward. The next meeting is going to be Tuesday, September sixth, at six PM. That's okay with everybody? Tuesday, because Monday's a holiday. Okay, then if there's nothing else, I could get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, you have a second then? Okay, all in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hereina, we are adjourned.